Nope, that's good. No problem. Thank you. Oh, I'll hit the banger. Call the council meeting order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Norby.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Mayor Mungy.
Here. Thank you. Motion to adopt agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer, second. Councilmember Woods. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, our consent agenda this evening. Item A, June 3, 2025 Workshop and City Council Minutes. Item B, general claims of $1,398,145.29. Item C, HRA claims of $3,557.98. Item D, tobacco sale license renewals for 2025 to 2026. Item E, liquor license renewals for 2025 to 2026. Item F, resolution accepting donations for May of 2025. Item G, building permit report for May of 2025. Item H, bring snowy home artist agreement. Item I, special event permit for Church of St. Peter, Bonfire and Potluck. And item J, special event permit for Veterans Park's 10th anniversary.
Thank you very much. Anybody like to pull any at this time? If not, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Norby. Second, Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Open to the public, Dan Fisher. Here comes the group. Welcome. Good, good to see you.
Three minutes apiece, is that what it is?
Yeah, sure.
I asked for a time. Just for some concerns that we have tonight, we have three. We have three charter members of Veterans Park Council that's met in 2010 at the request of past Mayor Terry Furlong to get a park built over here to honor veterans, somewhere, either by the lake or where it's at. So a group of five veterans and three non-veterans got together, unpaid volunteers, at no cost to the city, to get together and start the program. In five years, we raised $250,000 at no cost to the city, just time. Met all the engineering specs that were put on us to build that park. We hammered out an agreement with the city. I have a copy of it here. It's called our corporate book. It tells what the city does and what we do. We followed it. However, oh, and in 2015, we had a grand opening, and I'm sure many of you might have been there. However, we've had personnel turnovers like the city has. We've been through three mayors, four city managers, three police chiefs, and then newble staff downstairs that we work with. We've had people, our liaison to the city is temporarily with us or not. And we've lost many who passed on. We go through events coordinators like water. And the reason is that every time we come up to have an event, and we have anywhere from three to five in a year, we run into another hurdle that we didn't expect. Another request for another piece of paper. We have insurance, we have plaits. We've met all those requirements. I don't think the city has a file on us that they can go to the file and read what we've supplied because we're requested to meet another document. That is the basic problem. We don't have any issue with parks, police, or fire. Matter of fact, the parks, it's our partner. We don't even have to, we think along the same lines. We don't even have to call each other. But the city, the turnover in the city staff and the Veterans Park Committee when we get in a new person seems to be our hangup. So facilitating a special event like this upcoming 10th anniversary or anything else that comes up, I listed five, but turns into another unknown factor that we have to have, another fee, another requirement. My intent was to come here and ask that this be ironed out into a file that says Veterans Park. And all the person who is in the staff has to go over and look, oh, they got insurance, they got a plat, they got this, they got that, and say marching coordinates, whatever else like that. Because we sometimes find out we can't walk down the street, and we don't know why. Then it's easier for us to work with our VFW and our legions when we have an event. That's the whole point that I want to bring. Is that two minutes and 47 seconds?
Can't see.
All right, I pass my time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Drop a microphone, please, over here.
Wanted to bring a point. Brian and I have been working on this, but just to bring up a point of the type of issues that we run into. Our insurance is auto pay. And previous people working down in the office talked with Mary over at Gary Insurance. And they gave them whatever the email that they wanted the insurance to be sent to. Now, there's been Kerry and Maya and Jordan. It just keeps going. I mean, we've got different people down there. I went out to do the event permit. And I called her up and said, well, you guys have a copy of insurance. She said, no, we don't. What do you mean you don't? Gary Insurance emails it to you. Well, I don't get it, so I'm not going to go looking for it. It's, you know, I said, but it was sent to the city. Do we have to keep track of the staff here to keep the email straight out there? Or can they just, the city, contact them and give them a generic email so when they issue the insurance each year? Because I, do I have to keep, what I have to keep doing is telling them, well, they email me another copy, and then I can turn around and dump it to the city when they've already sent, the insurance company already sent it to the city to be covered for the year. It's just a lot of extra little work. And one of the other ones that Brian and I have discussed, and it's been taken care of already, but at the end, when I got all done, because we're a nonprofit, we're supposed to get the event permit for free. Got all done, and we got a bill from ID Gov or whatever, your payment engine for our permit. So we're just, things just, you know, they get frustrating because now we're going to have the walk, and then we're going to have the Vietnam, the Veterans Day. And I'm going to have to go back out there and do another permit. And I'm going to probably have to go and get another insurance and give it to the city again. Somewhere, it's broken. Because the insurance company in good faith is sending, we don't even get a copy. It goes directly here to be on file. And no one's filing it.
I guess what we're asking for is just have somebody here sit and say, here, I need this for this permit. Fine, let's move it on personally. Pretty easy, I think, so. Any questions to us?
Well, to assume that there's going to be no responsibilities on your end to make sure everything goes through, I think we have to think that, yes, we know what's coming up. You know, I don't know how it was in the past. Did proof of insurance go directly to Jill? Then did it go to my, and then, you know, so do things get lost along the way and new employees come in? You guys have new employees. There's going to be some hiccups. Nobody's looking to fight you guys by any means. We love what you guys put on out there, and that's a beautiful park. So just work with us, or we'll work with you, and we're going to get it figured out. It shouldn't be that big of a deal, actually. Indeed. We're happy to work with you.
Look forward to the 10th anniversary. I just talked to Councilmember Schwer here. I said, how can it be 10 years? It just seems like yesterday.
It's 15 in the planning.
15 in the planning, yeah.
Yeah.
We appreciate this beautiful park. We get more comments on that, so.
Appreciate your service.
My comment is, we worked really good with parks, really good with the St. Paul, with the fire department and the police department. Not a problem. Whatever it is, we're on the same page. But we're not on the same page down at the desk. That's where we hit the hiccups. Or is Canley, Lori. But those people understood where we're coming from. And we could walk up and say, and they'd facilitate us. Now it's not. Now it's, you need to do this, get it done. That's where the frustration comes.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to talk to us.
All right, 6:51 closed to public. City manager.
All right, we have on our city business section items, one item, which is the city hall security access system that was brought up earlier this year at our retreat. And we have Jason Mallinger, our fire chief, that is kind of heading this up. We've gone through several different vendors to kind of narrow it down to this one and put some clarification on what we've accomplished and where we're at now.
I don't think your friends are coming up, Jason, the way you look back there at them. From a distance, they got your bag. That's right.
Okay, we're on. All right, perfect. Let me get logged on to my computer here so I can see what you were looking at as well. I guess from the beginning, going back to the last winter in our retreat, was kind of the starting point, I think, for council to really be aware of the problems that we were having or are having with our current configuration, with our door locks and our security system and kind of putting it, what had happened at the end of '24 is all of a sudden, each door, we go around and program manually with a PDA. Some of these door locks that we have are original to the building in 2004. And all of a sudden, we weren't able to program some of these door locks. So we had technicians come out to try and troubleshoot the issue and see if we could get this taken care of. And we spent multiple hours trying to figure it out, but ultimately determining that basic software within these door locks are, for lack of a better word, you know, longer, no longer any good and no longer to be reprogrammed. So that began our process with really looking at what do we do and what do we need to do? So myself, Ron Ritchie, Randy Miller headed up Task Force, I guess. And we met with multiple vendors. We ended up meeting with, was it five? Five vendors, not just one time, but multiple times and really spending hours asking questions and learning and walking through the building with them, showing them city hall. And that has been our focus from the beginning, really, starting here with city hall. And trying to get to a situation where currently it's just myself that manages. We basically have three different types of operating systems throughout the city with over 125 door locks. And every one of them, you have to go out and touch. So if I have one person that needs to be changed, added, removed, or whatever, we're talking a minimum of maybe four hours a day to reprogram everything throughout the city for one person. We would try to do multiples at a time. Sometimes that's not a, you know, a good plan. And if we ever have a situation where we need to secure a door, lock it down, or remove something immediately, obviously, you know, we have to make sure that I'm available and we have time to do that. So we had a lot of things to look at and talk about. But we, ultimately, we identified 40 doors within city hall that were a high priority to be updated and on a secure access control system. We're looking at having our own on-prem server at this time. The service agreement for that would go through the contractor that we would choose. And there is an annual fee with that that would cover the maintenance related to that on-prem server. We would not have to have any additional costs related from IT. I've spoke to the head of the IT as it relates to this, had many conversations about whether we would do on-prem server or we would do something in the cloud. And ultimately, this was the best choice for us. We're looking at basically disabling the locks that we have on the doors right now to make this system work. And we could look at future replacement of those as standard hardware and doors needed to be changed. But the system would also allow us to include other buildings into the future. So if we decided to add Public Works and Casey Lake is an issue right now because IT, the system that's in there, we're having some issues there as well. That's no longer being supported or changed through what was installed. So learning a lot of these problems that we have, we were able to ask many questions as it relates to help build what we needed. Again, adding in park buildings, potentially housing in the future, once it gets a fiber line to it, potentially our wellhouses, all to be able to secure them and use the same system. Not looking at using it right away, but it could even connect with our cameras that we currently have within, in the building. There's no limits on the users or administration, so it means that it's not just me running this. I mean, we basically have super admins that oversee everything, but now I can let Ron, you know, manage his people, police manage their people, I can manage my people. We can have different admins that are managing their own people from within. The system obviously is audited and tracked, and there's a trail of information where now we really don't have that. Some keypads on the exterior of the building, so we're used to a lot of the push button on every door right now. We would have that at all exterior doors on the north parking lot and around the fire department for easy access. But really, everything else on the interior of the building would either be used with a FOB or mobile credentialing. We added in for safety features into finance and the community development department. They're the ones in the front. They see the people coming in and out of the building. They would have the ability to lock down all doors. This would have to, we would have to set up a plan and a policy around that, but we have the ability to be able to do that. They would also have separate buttons that could be for their front door areas to unlock the door, to allow people to deliver things as things, many deliveries come throughout the day as well. Currently, our main front doors, they're locked with a key by a person. So additional hardware in the system would be updating the front doors of that. We're looking at adding a door right over here in this hallway to secure the hallway in the back area to keep public seen, if you will. We're also looking at adding in this door here, some safety precautions for staff to be able to exit out and secure if needed. That's kind of it in a nutshell. I can ask some, answer any questions that you have them. Go right ahead.
You talked about auditability of the logs and, you know, things like that. Does this take into account any special requirements for both fire and police in terms of auditability by higher authorities, I guess?
Yeah, so for the police department right now, and the BCA has specific requirements on their folks and the people that can go in and out of that, those things won't change, but it will definitely help the PD to be able to track those things. So now evidence, if you will, there'll be a specific tracking log that will help them in preserving the evidence. And whereas right now, it's locked and secured, but there really is, other than maybe a paper log or some other way, but there will be an ability to see it within the system, who came and gone. It'll be an audited trail, if you will.
Okay.
Yeah. And that piece as well, depending on location, could be tied in with cameras to the door. So if you have a door and a camera pointing into it, in the future, we could tie those together.
Make sure that the person using that card or whatever was actually the person who was supposed to have it.
Correct.
Now, can this all be tied in when you upgrade for your Public Works building down there? Will that be able to be furthered in through as you get into that area next?
Yeah, definitely. So the on-prem server that we would have here would be able to support that and kind of be the base, if you will, of all these different locations. But definitely, we look to be able to, that's our goal. We want to be able to have the entire city on the one system that's operated by all of the admin to be able to allow access.
All your pump pulses too?
Yep.
When you looked at both server and cloud, was, what tilted towards the server?
Cost.
Cost?
Actually, the cost for the cloud was a lot more expensive. I was really surprised by that.
Okay.
Thank you so much for putting this together. I don't foresee costs getting cheaper anytime soon. In what was supplied to us, they say, it says the recurring monitoring and service rates are billed annually for a minimum of three-year term. What length term were you thinking of? And what length term can we lock in that 354?
Yeah. You know, obviously, you know, I've been working with Dan and updating him on the potential so that he's aware of that. And we're going into this with looking at the background of the company Electro Watchmen. And they were basically Metro Eye Networks quite closely with them throughout many other cities. And I've talked to the other cities that have used them before. So we feel safe, if you will. But I think where you're going is, you know, three years is a small time. Can we do better with a longer term and locking in a better rate?
Yep.
I think that's potential, yeah.
There are a few things left with this process, and part of it is the negotiations on a few items, and that's one of them.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
How long do you save? This is more than, the cameras aren't on it yet, so we don't.
No, no.
That was my other question about space when it comes to that.
But they could be.
Could be down there.
It could be.
Now, you had five. You chose from, where does this fall in as far as price? And what made you choose? What did this have that you, that really stuck out that you?
Yeah, we, like we said, we had we had five that we went through the process with and spent time with. And this one, through Electro Watchmen, obviously listed at $151,000. We've had, the highest one was anywhere from, there were kind of two variations of $200,000 to $210,000. An excellent system, obviously would do the same thing or a little bit more, but obviously a lot more expensive. A couple of the other ones, what stuck out to me with Electro Watchmen was their detailed quote and the time that they spent here with us and kind of going through the quote. And I will say the other, some of the other contractors, you know, said that they would provide that when asked. But he just kind of provided that. We had a couple others that just sent us a number and said, hey, we're in the area of 150-ish. You know, if you want to do more, let us know. We had another one that said, we can do a more detailed quote, but it's going to cost you $1,200 to $1,500 to do that. So we didn't go down that road either. So, and we had a much less expensive quote, but it isn't a comparable system to a commercial grade, what we're looking at.
That one just got thrown out.
It got thrown out because I felt like it puts us in the same position that we're in five years, 10 years down the road. We're looking at a system that is going to be here when we're gone. And somebody else can take it over and keep using it. When we're putting in the wiring and the strike plates and the doors, it's going to be here for a long time. And right now, it's just not a time conducive. It doesn't make sense.
Great, thanks for that detail.
Ron, you got anything to add?
One question for Dan. So obviously, this is $152,000 hit to the budget. Is this good, or are we going to have to make this up from somewhere else?
It's going on Ron's budget.
There you go. Isn't that the way it is? Everything just higher and higher. Yeah, so that, in the budget is a 70, I think, $71,000 or whatever it was. That was out of the Wold's report. So that's what they utilized on that for the city hall. Good news is that we did have two items that were on the capital plan for 2026, being the security windows on both the community development side and the finance side. And you remember, I think all of you were shocked at what those costs were there, but we had left them. We told you it would come in less than that. I think they were like about $140,000 each side. We're looking at about $280,000. It really came in too, and don't quote me on this, Ron, if you know the exact, I think it came in about $35,000.
Each?
No, total for both sides of, yeah. So it's really looking at that saving, yeah, that the savings is there to be able to cover this. And again, we'll be starting the overall budget process soon, and we'll get to see all of the fun stuff. But yeah, that's kind of how we were looking at it, that there was enough savings on those two items that does cover this increased cost, so.
I'm more inquisitive. Is this a badge or like the FOBs that?
So we're looking at, it would be more like a FOB, like we currently have.
Okay.
But it also has the, we are getting at this time in the quote, we have 50 mobile credentials. So your phone could be used as your.
Oh, that's great. And then when you provide somebody access, I'm just going to use myself, for example. So you provide me access, I'm done off of council next year. Do you go into, does Electro Watchmen handle that? Or do you guys have the access? You can go on and say, we're terminating Cassidy now.
Yep, we have the access. So again, we would have super admins that would oversee, and then department heads that would oversee their people and locations.
And everything's in real time? So if you see that I can, I'm entering Dan's office?
Yes.
You got to straighten up?
Yeah, right. Make sure, make sure the papers are clean. But it'll say, you know, Cassidy went in at 7:07 PM and.
And there's the potential for even. And there's the potential for even further remote access. If Brian's at home and a contractor's coming in here early in the morning, he wants to log in and unlock a door to let them in to do work, that could be done as well.
And do you have, through the site, do you have ability to, we'll say, Ron has access to council chambers only and ground, or, sorry, not grounds, public works?
Yes, so that's where the super admin comes in.
Excellent.
They can silo where.
Time chain, like time, all that entry, so 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Sure.
All access, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Can you tell I'm familiar with some of it?
Yeah. It's really, after dealing with this, you know, for some time, it's exciting to think that we could get there and what we'll be able to do and the time savings that will be spent in just being able to operate efficiently.
Awesome.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, talk about the panic.
So, and talking a little bit about that, you know, obviously, like I said before, we're going to have to come up with a policy within, with city staff and the police department, you know, when they hit the lockdown or panic buttons, who it's going to be notifying and what type of actions are going to be taken. But we'll be able to lock down, secure, and pretty much make it so that even for me as the fire chief, I'm not going to be able to open or unlock any door, but I could change it so that credentials for a police officer, that they're able to open or unlock and go to wherever they need to be. There's endless, I don't want to say endless, but I guess there's a lot of possibilities.
Awesome.
A lot more than what we have, right?
What's your timeline for getting this all installed?
Well, you know, when we were talking with them late this winter and earlier this spring, you know, we're still looking at a timeframe yet this year. That's the goal. I know they're working in current cities right now, so it's all dependent on their schedule. But, you know, my goal is to work with them and try to get things moving as quickly as possible. We.
That's good.
Well, I mean, you need to make sure it's done to code.
You got that right. We got rules around here.
Yes, we do. That sounds awesome.
It does. It's exciting.
It's even better on a budget end.
Yeah. Yeah, and thanks for Dan and, and again, Ron and Randy for helping out. And, you know, again, you guys working with the budget to be able to get this to a point where we can do these things. And that was the problem in the past. We didn't have that to be able to do that. And we just kept on replacing door locks and spending 2,500 a door lock on an old system that we were just stuck in a rut.
And your time too is so valuable when you don't get all that extra, yeah, so that's great. Thank you for your presentation. And we have to vote on it, don't we? Or not? Because it's underneath that.
Yep.
Yep, that's what I thought.
Just one additional thing I'll add to that is, it's pretty nicely streamlined for Casey Lake right now, just because we have the fiber out there. I've asked the electric department to get the fiber. We have fiber that goes right by Housie Park, but it's not tapped into, but, so we're in the process of doing that to where we can get the door locks in there and also get some security cameras out there.
Great.
So they'll be, the security will be on the new system?
For?
Housie Park.
Yeah, potentially.
Be good to have a test on there, be able to throw it on there and see how we like it, make sure we're good.
Yep.
Awesome.
Those, so, just so you're aware, this is for the City Hall building only, not the other locations at this time.
Okay. Even, so the old one's going to be on for Housie then? I thought you were, am I mistaken? Did I hear something wrong?
Well, that's, I'm following you right now, Mayor.
Okay.
So we're only doing the locks for City Hall itself, so.
Correct. But the system can be built to.
To additional, thank you.
Well, you just brought up that Housie Park's getting fiber for someday.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was going to start, okay.
Just move into Public Works as well.
Dan, find us some more money.
All right. Shake your tree. All right. Anything else? Not, well, to vote, can I get a motion for the City Hall security system?
I make a motion.
All right. Councilmember Schwer, second?
I'll second.
Okay. And Councilmember Kinsey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks for your work. You too, back there. Both of yous.
All right. Reports for, from city manager and departments. Had our staff meeting today. Like I said, the electric department is working on getting fiber to Housie Park right now. They're also working on getting a time of use program going, which we only have one customer on our system right now that has time of use, and that is Reflex Medical and its commercial account. But over the years, and more and more people are getting into electric vehicles, so we're looking at getting time of use for people in their homes to plug in and charge their electric vehicles. How it works is, there are, there are three different rates right now that, what it costs us to buy electricity on the wholesale market, it is cheapest from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So by having a time of use system, that's what you do, is you try to push people onto charging during that time, because it's much cheaper. However, if they don't do it at that time, they do it during regular business hours, it will cost them much more than what it costs right now to do it on the rates. So it's, takes on responsibility from them to be able to charge at the right time, you know, whether or not it's putting a timer on that system. It's also a separate service that comes into the house, because you can't have one meter that will just do time of use for a specific time or a specific area. So it's a separate service coming in the house, usually just the garage, and then on that time of use program. We've had a handful of people that inquired about it over the years, but we see more and more that it's coming up and it's becoming a thing of the future, so. Plus, we have other members in our wholesale power that we belong to for other cities, the bigger cities like Shakopee, Anoka, Chaska, places like that, they have these programs, and they're coming down to our level now too, so look for more information for that to come.
With all cost, what does it cost to be able to throw another meter on there and stuff like that? Do they?
It's not cheap.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so if you're running a separate service to your home, I mean, I would count on, you know, I priced it out, but it's going to be a couple to a few thousand dollars to run a separate service with a new meter. And so, yeah, there's, there's cost involved.
Thank you.
So we unfortunately had a pretty good outage here a little while back. We've had many companies coming into town that have been installing a lot of fiber, a lot of fiber to the home. I think some of these, you know, it becomes subcontractors of subcontractors, so it's hard to keep track of them and, you know, the level of training that they're given to this. This person put a screw through covering over top of high voltage wires and put a screw into 8,000 volts. Very fortunate that he was not injured. But, so we're coming back down to the company that is hiring these contractors, making sure that they're given the proper training for this. I mean, that should have never happened. Crews are also working and getting close out there on 17th and Delaware. They're getting, pulling the old poles. I think most all of that work is done now, so most of it took time because it was just trying to get the equipment and the wire here from, has been taken literally years. Communication was busy with big truck night. There was actually a good turnout for that, even though we had adverse weather, but ended up cutting it short, but it was a good night overall. They have the, one of their classes tomorrow, the first night of outdoor exercise out at Housie Park, from 5:00 to 6:00 tomorrow, rain or shine. They'll bring it indoors if the weather doesn't cooperate. Also planning the upcoming events, National Night Out will be here before we know it, Moving the Park and Autumn Arts Festival. And also, she's been working with the construction process. They have weekly meetings, so she can get those updates out to the public and where we're at, and working with WSB on that, but she's doing a good job. Community development, we have been contacted by FOTH Environmental, which is through Ramsey County, it's a free service to us. We are going to start the process now of going out for bids for a new hauler for our trash. So, of course, we'll get more information from you guys and, you know, where you want to go, bulk pickup, good stuff like that. So we'll be starting that process here very soon. Everything seems to be going good with the construction notices as well. You see the finance clearly very busy with the budgeting. We have one more department to go with, and that's Ron, we'll be meeting with him tomorrow with all of his budgets, so, yeah, so.
That'll be a big one.
That'll be a big one. Yep, there's a lot to go over, but things are going, going well with it. HR, Jenny and Dan and people from their departments are looking at new payroll and HR software. Did go out for an RFP, we had what, five submittals? We have narrowed it down, and we're getting very close to, you know, figuring out the fine details of that, so more to come on that, which will be really helpful with what Jenny's.
I really wanted to know what it was.
We have, Public Works, they have all of their summer help now, which, so now they'll be doing more of the fixing potholes and getting out with the asphalt crews. Student-built houses getting really close, they're getting to pour the driveway, the back patio. They're really getting close to complete. One of the final things is just putting up a fence between them and the neighbors that they have there, just to, just kind of keep that separation, because it was a little bit of a smaller lot to work with, so it's a little tighter around the perimeter, so they'll just have that privacy fence put in there, but we're getting really close. And then we'll be moving on to our next one, and that will be the last of Tom Spann and all the work he's done for the city, so. But good for him for his retirement. Also been working with the, well, Rory Park Restrooms, we've been getting a lot of feedback just due to the unfortunate incident that we had there, and unfortunately, a homeless person that was living in there and locking the doors. We've had a lot of feedback because people really use that. It's a really nice facility, people love that along the DNR Trail. Through the feedback we got, we have opened it back up, we're just going to try to watch it. We do have the dividers ordered for the interior of the bathrooms, which will give the ability of, you know, people going in and then locking a door for the stall that they're in, which means that we'll take away the feature of being able to lock that door during the day, because that's what this person is doing, they're going in there, they're locking it, and then they're staying inside, and it's, it's no use to the public, so.
Do we have any outside cameras on that?
I was going to ask, same thing.
We do, and we are in the process of updating that, because we have, there are two cameras, and one at each end of a very long parking lot. So the one that faces the lavatories is all the way out by Second Street, so it's a very long way to look. So what we're going to do is the camera that is on the west side, but it faces east, we're going to put a dual camera there, one that will face the restrooms and then also face to the east down there, so, yeah. We've just unfortunately had bad luck, and it seems like summertime is, it kind of ramps up, people vandalizing these bathrooms. Sometimes very disgusting things, I mean, they're taking toilet rolls out, they're throwing them in the toilets, defecating on them, smearing that on the walls, I mean, it's, it's just ridiculous, which makes you want to throw your hands up in the air and just shut them down, but.
Is this happening again?
It is.
Where, which ones?
Casey, it's happening at, we see regularly things happening up at Silver Lake too, unfortunately. It's, it's just really unfortunate, but. And then putting that burden on the janitors to go in there and clean up this biohazard at that point, I mean, it's just really unfortunate. As you heard, Fire Department's been very busy with the locking system. They've, they currently have, what, more volunteer firemen than you've had in a very long time up to.
That's awesome.
We're very fortunate, potentially, I have one going through the last process right now of, of the health and the agility test, but if he passes and comes through, we'll be at 39.
Wow.
So we can have up to 40. We haven't, I had to ask Ava to take things off the website, because I just don't have the capacity anymore, even for one more person, because we have three that just finished class and potentially six that will go through class, and, so it's a good problem to have, but, yeah, so we're on hold right now for hiring, which is awesome.
Let's see her call.
Well, I'm glad the mayor doesn't have a health and agility test, you guys have an empty mic.
And you guys have been doing some good training with the water crews recently, especially Ramsey County?
Yes, so we've, are teaming up, actually with Ramsey County Water Patrol. We do a lot of training with them throughout the year, ice water rescue and warm water rescue as well. But throughout the entire county, we have auto aid to structure fires where we send multiple units to help deal with the situation in the most difficult time in the beginning of a call. So we're throwing that same thought process between, for our water rescues. So every department within Ramsey County has an asset. We have our boat. We would respond to a water rescue on a lake to help assist the agencies as they would come here to help assist, along with Ramsey County Water Patrol. We've studied over the past three, four years and throughout the entire suburban Ramsey County, not including St. Paul, we've had anywhere from eight to a dozen water rescue incidents, and we feel this is not a huge number where we can be able to respond and help other people. So we did extensive training a month ago with all the departments, and we're looking to go live with this July 1st.
For your own, huh?
Yeah. We just, I just came back before this meeting, our truck committee for our new engine 520 that's being built at Custom Fire in Osceola, Wisconsin, and I just got back with, from them, with them from taking a look at it. We're about five weeks out from receiving that, so they have the cabin chassis, obviously, was, was built, they have the, the pump on right now, and they're working basically on the rear panels, if you will, and we're about five weeks out, so it's quite exciting.
So we'll have it for National Night Out?
There's a good possibility that we'll have it for National Night Out, yeah.
Cool.
Yep, and then, let's see, yeah, it'll take us a couple months maybe to do some onboard training with everybody. I told them, we've gone full circle. I started on the department some time ago, everything was manual. We changed over to electronic and air, we're going back to manual again, so we're excited for that, but we got some training to do once we receive it. And, you know, the truck that it's replacing is 30 years old, so we hope this truck will last 30 years as, as well, so, exciting.
Much so. And lastly, the police department, which, they're of course involved in just that unspeakable tragedy over the weekend. Think of nightmares, personaging officers, going to these houses and having our legislators being murdered, it was just horrible. So everybody was on high alert, you know, taking the extra steps to, you know, watch local legislators and get progress. We actually, our sergeant that is on the BCA task force, they were present when they brought that person into custody out there. It was just quite a weekend. They put a lot of hours into that. They did just a spectacular job that worked out really well, that could really have taken a different turn for its ending. But ties in well with what we're looking at here for updating our security aspects, whether or not it's the new locks, you know, adding new doors for locking these areas for security for our council chambers. We are going to be having a police chief be attending our meetings now, just taking these extra precautions that unfortunately where we're at in our society right now. We did unfortunately have a cybersecurity incident here the last couple days. It is unbelievable how many phishing scams that are out there now that, and they're not just general stuff, I mean, they're, they're getting specific about, you know, mentioning certain things. I got one last week, you know, Jenny and I are working on updating the personnel policy. It said personnel policy update, but it said from the HR department. So, I mean, it was obvious, but, I mean, they're knowing things that you're currently doing and involved in, which makes it easy to be able to click on something like that. And it was one of our newer officers, and unfortunately, so we're going through the process, you know, that needs to be reported to the state within three days, just going through the whole process, finding out, you know, locking down the computer and making sure that we prevent any further problems with that, so. And that's all I have for you.
I have a quick question for you, and I think this may be obvious, as we are approaching 4th of July, and we're, I'm hearing them on the weekends, the fireworks, we have a plan in place, and are we starting a plan in place for all of our lovely parks?
They are, there's already been a lot of They are, there's already been a lot of calls. You know, clearly, by the time somebody hears something, calls in, officer responds, they're gone. We had even a couple, was it today or yesterday, that people were driving by Highway 36 in one of the apartment complexes, they could see something going off, so then a call came in, they might have just seen the smoke, so it came in as a fire up there, as a brush fire. They were actually even called out there twice, both of it was for fireworks. Well, thankfully, it wasn't a fire, but, yeah, we're seeing them already, expected this time of year, you know, well through and past the 4th. We do the best we can to stay on top of it, and, you know, Jason's always good about having his crews around and available, especially on the night of the 4th, and PD's certainly getting calls for it, yeah.
Did we rent one of those portable cameras last year?
We did.
Yes.
Are we doing the same thing?
Yeah, I talked to Ray about that, and then the intent is to do that again.
Good question.
Yep. Yeah, we've had a few years in a row that were pretty bad instances, so, worthwhile. And we have better cameras, the security cameras that we have out there now are actually better placed as well for keeping an eye on things.
Great, thank you. Reports?
I don't have any as of now, but I hear Parks and Rec will meet here next Wednesday at 6:30 PM at Council Chambers.
Of our EDA, we looked into two of the facade applications, one by the VFW, and one by the combination building of Sweeties and Chalecs. And the Sweeties and Chalecs was approved, and we sent back to VFW to do just a little bit more work on a possible different style of design of what the facade program was requiring. But otherwise, they're going to come back with a new program.
Thank you.
No updates from the Arts and Culture Commission?
The next planning commission is tentatively on July 3rd. I know there was a survey put out to all the members to see if we were going to have a quorum or not, and I'm not sure that that result is in. So, I don't know if there's a planning commission meeting July 3rd or not.
There may be a special meeting, if not, just for the sake of some of the things that need to get done within a timeline, yeah.
July 3rd's a tough one.
It is.
Anybody have any general business?
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to send my condolences to the Hortman family, our state representative, who lost, their children lost their parents, and also to Senator Hoffman and his spouse as they are recovering in the hospital currently. As elected officials and public government, we do this as a volunteer to our city. We're passionate about topics in our city. These are tough times, not only for local, but all state and federal government. This is, this, this was hard hit here at home, and I know even more so here in Minnesota, but nationwide. I have colleagues that have reached out and said, are you guys okay? I think it's important that we recognize that we all have our differences with one another, and we believe, we have different beliefs, but we are all one community, and we are all human, and we need to treat and continue to treat each other with dignity and respect. My prayers are with both of those families as they are currently grieving at this time.
Well said, I second that, very well said, I agree too. Thank you, thank you for saying that, appreciate it. All right, if there's nothing else, can I have a call for German, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
July 1st is our next meeting, thanks, everyone.